Today is October 9, 2017 and the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are in session. We are not in our normal meeting place as you can tell. We are at the historic Carson House tonight. Each year we meet in the month of October and we commemorate the first meeting of government which was held in this same house in the year of 1843. So we do that to recognize our founding fathers. And at this time we'll stand and we always begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge. And Commissioner Peters, if you will listen to prayer, Mr. Crawford, listen to pledge, sir.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we call upon your name today, Lord. Just want to say thank you for saving us. Thank you for your son Jesus died upon a cross for us. Father, we thank you we're able to sit here in this house, Lord, where the first meeting was ever held of the local government, Lord. Just want to remember, dear God, how this county was formed, how it was founded, and, God, that we would continue on to the work of the people of this county. That God just lead us guys and direct us in this meeting tonight and help us to make the right decisions we need to make for the people of the county. And those during the tornado, Lord, the lives that were lost yesterday in Morganton, dear God, we pray that you should be with that family. Just watch over and protect them, we do pray. And just help us draw closure in these times, our military, we pray for them. As we're speaking right now, we have one of our own, one of our own fixing to leave to go to the military. And, Father, we pray that you put a hedge around him, protect him, we do pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we have the minutes before us. This will be the September 18 work session and the regular session on September 18. You've had a chance to look at these. What's the prayers of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion on favor say aye. Any opposed, last time. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move to the next item, which is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or additions to the agenda by staff or commissioners? There being, now what's the prayers of the board concerning the approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve, Jim, for example.
Okay, you have a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, last time. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to our appointment schedule. First item, well, we'll just hold that. It's a 4:30 appointment. We'll move to old business, item A. This is the Transit Department update. Mr. Wood, sir, go right ahead and lead us out.
Yes, sir. So again, a couple of months ago, the board voted to establish a transit or transportation department effective July 1st of 2018. And so we've been working on the staff level for the last couple of months on this initiative. We've also had several phone conversations. And last week, we had a visit from NC DOT, from their public transportation division staff person. And so where we are right now, we have quite a lengthy list of policies and procedures that we're working on. We will present those to you as soon as we have them. There's still some in the process. Hopefully, we'll get those out quickly for approval, hopefully, at the November meeting. But we are working on the to-do list that they have sent us. We're also working on several of the big picture items such as departmental budget, the vehicle replacement schedule, and also the Transportation Advisory Board Committee. You have that in your memo. Each transit department is required to have a transportation advisory committee. And so we, and you see there in the packet, it's after the bylaws, apologize for that, there is a recommendation on how that advisory board is set up. And so a lot of times, you'll have a board or committee. It's just interested persons who you would like to place. They essentially require that you have categories that are met as much as possible. And so you will have, you see there a couple of columns. You have public human service agency. So you would have a senior center director, a DSS director, health department, et cetera. You have transportation providers, public and business sector, and government and governmental affiliates. And so the county has had a transportation planning board for many years, which is technically a separate organization. But it has several of the same folks that are on that board. I did ask if we could just take that board and move them over. That would be expedient. And we were told no. That some of the same people could serve. We just couldn't make that same, just switch. So tonight, if you would allow us to treat this as a first reading for the Transportation Advisory Board, our goal in November would be to have this board appointed, to have the attached bylaws approved, to have many of the policies reviewed. So next month should be a very intense transportation focus. I did ask the staff, we needed to have something before then because of deadlines. She said November meeting was perfectly okay. So again, if you'll allow us to advertise these openings and availability for the first reading for this next month, we will bring back any applicants. That's okay.
Okay, what's prayers of the board?
Motion.
Well, none of us were asked it, so we'll move on. That's the first reading right there. Let's go to the shooting range update. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. This is an item, obviously, we keep in close contact with, with the state on. We called a couple of weeks ago about a status update and had good news on the call. They have requested that we go to Raleigh later this week to discuss the MOU for how that would look for the county and for the state. And so each of the ranges that have been built with these funds have been under a cooperative arrangement where Cleveland County, some of the other counties in the area have built these ranges under agreement. And so it just governed, you know, that it will be open to the public and, you know, that sort of thing. It's nothing that we wouldn't do already. So we will travel down later in the week and review that with them. So that's definitely a positive step. We're still waiting on the date of the sound test. They've been in contact with us on that in the past week. So I've been reassured that it will be this month that they will do that formal sound test. So you'll remember last month, they were going to the sound test in October, and they were hoping for the public meeting in December. So we're on that schedule that they presented to us last month and we presented to you. So should be a productive meeting at their office and we'll certainly report back next month when we learn.
The sound test is on schedule by this month.
My understanding, yes, sir.
Good. Could you send out a memo when we have a date for that?
Yes, sir. We will definitely make sure on the sound test and definitely on the public meeting, we will advertise it with our means as well. It's their meeting, but we definitely want to make sure people that want to go will be aware of it.
Sounds positive. Okay, so moving to the next item under old business. This is a courthouse project update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. I brought this back on the agenda last month because I mentioned that there's been a lot of work in the background. And sometimes, you know, we've communicated, you know, offline that the work is proceeding. But as we get closer to the bidding, we want to make sure it's in front of you and fresh, so it's not stale at that point. I had a great meeting with the architect about two weeks ago. Terry Poyster was there, and we just wanted to see from him, from the architect, the plans and see where he was presenting them to you for your review and comments. The plans have not changed that much as far as what you saw several months ago, as far as still planning the windows and the addition to the courtroom, et cetera. He's had to move a column here and there as they've learned more about the building. But it's still essentially what you've seen before. So one of the things we're looking at as part of the project and that you directed that we took in this project is the update on HVAC system. So right now, we have a steam boiler that's in essentially a basement. We had talked about reusing that boiler and going to a hot water system. The boiler was still functional, had a functional life. It seemed to be okay for another 15 or 20 years. And looking at the scale of the project and some of the other needs, what we're looking to do now is eliminate that boiler that's in that lower level. It's very hard to access. It's just a hard piece of equipment to maintain. And it is about 15 years old. So we are looking at, as part of the project, relocating the, essentially the boiler room to the ground level location, probably in the one heat area of the parking deck that would have been sealed off already, put in that area where it's accessible to vehicles and that sort of thing. And then having a modern heating system to come out of that, looking probably in natural gas. So this way, we can abandon that boiler that's 15 or 20 years old. We can just dedicate that to other uses in that area. And it will go, you know, fresh from the start. The cost is minimal because there were going to have to be upgrades to the existing boiler. So again, we're waiting on the final proposal by. It seems like the right time to do that and get it to the area where it can make things easier. So the goal would be to have Mr. Hamrick come ideally with a work session with you and present the plans in detail and go over those with you and probably do a walk-in tour about where things will be so you have a comfortable level and then you can provide feedback. So that, we're hoping in the next couple of weeks and maybe before the next board meeting to do that. So we'll try to get that scheduled as soon as we can and not hold up that project. Everything is going well.
Okay. Let's move to our next item on the agenda. This will be the Greenway Trail update.
Yes, sir. We had a staff had a meeting with McGill Associates this past Thursday. Again, they are the contracted engineering firm for the Greenway. You've heard many updates about this going over the years. But where we are now is they are doing the survey and design. They have been on the site numerous times. And this is again the old County River Park. And so they are trying their best to determine where some of the park amenities, where the actual Greenway Trail should go for the Part F, the Parks and Recreation Transfer Fund grant. But they are also looking at the future. Because when we recommended that you hire them previously, we asked that you allow them to do a little bit additional work to prepare us for next phases. So we've talked in this setting about a bridge across the river. We've talked about extending it more towards Phase 1 of the Greenway. And so they have included those aspects of the project in their work. So they are having to take into account floodway, property limitations, et cetera. So hopefully next month, it'll probably be in about two weeks, we'll have a layout from them. But definitely next month, we'll have the projection screen and it can show what the layout will look like. So it's, that's proceeding as well. You do have a timeline. And I apologize, it's a very large paper they gave us. But the schedule they are looking at, it's 260-day schedule dating back to August 14. And their anticipated completion of construction is August 10 of 2018. That works out with our grant schedule. We probably will need a grant extension, which should put us through the end of 2018. So that gives us a little bit of time. Construction or what have you is delayed. There is a lot of planning and permitting that goes into this because of where it is. River Greenways are typically in floodways and flood drains. And so it is something that takes a lot of evaluation and review. They are on it, and we'll bring the design back next month.
Okay, this board's very interested and dedicated in moving forward with Greenways. People need to have access to exercise. And we're all about reducing the beast. This our board continues to move forward with partnerships with city and others to provide adequate spaces for people to exercise.
That's right. It's also, if I may, it's, you've endorsed the extension of the Font de Flora State Trail. So this segment is part of that state trail now. And so that does help for publicity and hopefully grant funding for future extensions down the road.
The August 18, that doesn't include the bridge?
That does not include the bridge. That is just the part on the county park.
Okay, any other comments, questions? There being, let's move to item E under old business. This would be the Stacy Hill Road Waterline Engineering Contract. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Last month, the board did agree to move forward this project. And so we have been working on engineering for several months. So you do have a contract with McGill to do that work. And they have done quite a bit of work for us, and they do a great job. So this contract covers the design and bidding and also the construction and post-construction phases, which, you know, during construction, they have someone out every day on making sure the contractor is doing what they need to be doing. And they do the closeout with the permit agencies, et cetera. So we would ask for contract approval.
Okay. Comments, questions about board members? All those prayers of the board?
Motion.
Please.
Motion to approve the engineering contract from McGill, Stacy Hill Road Waterline.
Second. Discussion on favor say aye. Any opposed, last time. Okay. Gentlemen, this time let's move to new business, item A, administrative items. Mr. Wood, go ahead and serve these out.
Yes, sir. There are three items on here. So sometimes, this is kind of a catch-all for us. Last month, you had a first reading on a overtime policy from Emergency Services Office. And Mr. Calver went over that policy with you. Didn't note any comments of concern at that point from you nor from any staff, staff, or any of the HR staff. And so we would ask that the, that language be inserted in the county personnel ordinance. Excuse me, resolution.
Okay, comments, questions for staff? All those prayers of the board?
I'd like a motion to approve the emergency personnel overtime policy.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, last time.
Okay, you have two more finance-related items. The first one, there's a large attachment of last names and account numbers and dollar amounts. These are EMS accounts that are non-collectible. And 99 times out of 100, these are persons that have passed away without an estate or folks that are truly indigent. And so I think that everyone in here understands that our staff does not, you know, give up on an account easily. And so these are ones that are truly, plus not collectible. And the ones that you have on this sheet are actually not collectible really at all at this point because they're past 10 years that we did try to collect them. So again, we've expended quite a bit of effort. And the ones that say 10-year collection long, we no longer go after for soon.
Okay, gentlemen, you see the list. You've heard from staff. Comments or questions by board members? There being, now what's prayers of the board?
Motion to approve, Mr. Robb.
Okay, we have a second discussion. All of them very much say aye. Any opposed, last time. Okay.
The last item under this heading, we have two occupancy tax late fee filing waivers. And you have the businesses listed there and their reasons for submitting their occupancy tax listings late. And so these folks have typically, the first one is paid on time. The second one is a little bit different in that they're in a border area and they may even have a Black Mountain address. And so they were sending their tax receipts to Buncombe County. Thankfully, it was straightened out to our benefit. And they are redirecting it. And the funds are being received from Buncombe that were paid in error. So we benefited in that one case. We would ask, and that technically is a late filing for that period, so we'd ask to waive the fee.
Okay, any comments or questions? Mr. Wood, the second of the business two, does that exist in business, been here and just?
It is. I think it's, there are several subdivisions that come to mind that are maybe accessed by Buncombe County. And, you know, maybe they haven't gotten their bill yet or regular property tax bill. So there was an unawareness that they were actually in McDowell County. And so that has been straightened out, that it isn't existing. And a lot of these, we're starting to see, there's websites called Airbnb and HomeAway where, you know, folks like yourself and me can go on and list. If you have a room available or your house available, you can list those on the internet. Those are short-term rentals and they require that occupancy. The room tax, the room tax can be collected. And so those websites are actually collecting that tax for us and submitting it to us. So we don't have to track down whoever is listing these rooms online. And so that may be part of the issue as well. So.
So this is a, I was going to ask you what type of business it is. So this business too is a rental type business?
Yes, sir. Maybe like a bed and breakfast or even someone renting out a bedroom or something. Or maybe their whole house, just when they're not there.
But once they realized that they were in air, they, they, they got, they started paying the property, right?
That's right. And we're got them all straight down.
And the first one, you know, eight, nine-year-old father, he had to help him hurricane victim in Florida.
Certainly understandable.
Yeah. Okay, what's prayers, comments, questions? What's prayers of the board?
Motion to approve the waivers.
Second. Discussion. All of those that very much say aye. Any opposed, last time. Okay, gentlemen, let's move to item B on the, under old business, I mean, new business. And this is tax matters. Mr. Wood, anything you need to say here?
You do have your typical releases, refunds, et cetera. But you also have three requests for the elderly exemption. These are folks that were not aware of the June 1 deadline. And you do have the ability to accept late applications.
And these are the elderly applying for the exemption?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's handle that first. What's prayers of the board?
Make a motion that we accept the application.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, last time. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Wood.
Then you do have the releases and rebills. And we've also, if I haven't noted, will note, we have been providing notice of discovery bills. And so every time there's a piece of property that's discovered by whatever reason that wasn't listed before, we now, I think it's actually required that we give you notice. So it's either, a lot of times, it may be, a lot of these have looked through, they are mobile homes, and were probably titled or assigned to the different properties, and we have to do the discovery of that.
Okay, comments, questions? There being, now what's prayers of the board?
Motion to approve, release and refunds.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, last time. Okay. Mr. Wood, let's go to item C under old business. And this is just standard board appointments. We have the adult home care, nursing home, garage board. This is second reading. And we've got the ballot sheets coming to us right now, gentlemen.
There's only one application for the adult home, and that's a reapportment from Leah Robertson.
Clerk, just go ahead and redress this out.
Also, we have the Regency Workforce Development Board, and that is served by Rutherford, McDowell, Cleveland, and Polk. And the board has a vacancy that needs to be filled from a representative of higher education from McDowell County. In the past, that was filled from Caldwell County, no, from Cleveland County, from the community college president. So they would like Dr. Gossett to fill that position because it has to be in, because of his position, it has to be.
Gentlemen, this is the first reading on that particular committee. But since the requirement of the board states someone in higher education, are y'all, okay, I'll take a motion to dis, one formally, dispense with this first reading and go ahead and vote on the Regency Workforce Development Board. Do you hear a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to that.
Okay, discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, last time. Okay, that way you go ahead and vote on that one. Name first.
Also, we have an opening on the planning board. It is for an existing member's term. So this is the first reading for that. So I'll be advertising the planning board vacancy. And also the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Finance Authority Board, I have advertised and have had no applications for that whatsoever. And that board meets very, very rarely due to the nature of what they meet at.
It sounds fun.
I think the name scares away.
Okay, let's pass our ballots in. And our clerk will total the ballots.
Okay, is unanimous for Ms. Robertson for the Adult Home Care Nursing Home Advisory Board and for Dr. Gossett on Regency Workforce Development Board.
Right. And I'd like to say that we would encourage people who have a desire to get active in our community and who want to serve on particular boards, there are a host of boards. And if someone has interest in serving on a board and you want to be involved in McDowell County, so one thing is say you want to see change happen and, another thing is to be part of the change. So we would encourage you to go to the county administration building. And they have a man of court that's at our.
In my office. And also, there's an application online.
Okay. So we would encourage you to get involved and see what's available. We need volunteers. Okay. Let's move to the next item under our new business. This will be the Glenwood Christmas Parade permit. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Folks may see that and say, you know, why is the county talking about Glenwood Christmas Parade? Well, the reason is that several years ago, the state changed how they approved road closures for special events. Typically, years passed, it was much more informal where the county manager could sign off, yes, we understand they're closing a road and it's okay. Government being what it is, it's more formalized. I'll use that word and not a different one. And so NC DOT does require now, when there's a closure of a state road, that they have a governmental board to the closure. Otherwise, if a private group such as the Glenwood Ruhr tan were to close it, it's a much more difficult process. There's insurance and liability forms, and it would take months and months and months to do. And last year and probably years past, you've been more than happy to help facilitate the parade. And so you have, it's actually an ordinance that's attached that shows the references to statute, references to date, which is Saturday, November 25th, and the time from 3:00 to 4:30, and the route. Essentially, this is old US 221 there beside Glenwood School where it's been. Essentially, this is old US 221 there beside Glenwood School where it's been since the parade started. It has the closures listed and DOT hasn't reviewed this and they are fine. There's no other events that day, I think. So we would ask that you approve this ordinance so there can be a parade that day. If you don't, I'm sure there would be a lot of unhappy people with kids and everyone would be unhappy because of that. No pressure.
Okay, comments, questions? If no, if you've not attended that parade, it is a good parade. I mean, it's, it's, they have the, a lot of different groups in there. Barry says you can throw candy. Barry's usually there trying to get out of line. We won't go there tonight, but it's a very good parade. It's, it's hosted, the host of the parade, they do a great job with it, that group down there, department's involved. And so we would encourage people in McDowell County to go to that parade on that particular day and enjoy that, take family, good family event. Comments, questions by board members? There being none, let's pleasure the board.
Motion to approve the order declaring a road closure for 2017 Glenwood Christmas Parade.
Second. Discussion. All of those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye opposed last time. Okay, thank you, Jim. Now let's go to, we have a 4:30 appointment and it is at that time of day. So we have ARC closeout, a grant closeout, and we're going to have a public hearing at this time. I dare a motion pursuant to North Carolina statute 1-597, we go into public hearing.
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye. Aye opposed last time. Okay? And, Mr. Woodin, we have staff of ARC here, so if you want to go ahead and introduce and lead out.
Sure. Just briefly, I may steal all of Laurie's thunder, but the county received Appalachian Regional Commission grant funding. I'll try not to do too much. Go right ahead. The county received ARC funding for two water lines in the past three or four years. The first helped serve the Universal Building. That building was on public sewer but not public water, so now it's on public water. We also had funding for the I-40 interchange out in Nevo that was ARC. So we have, as part of the process, have a public comment and Laurie can add whatever... This is Laurie Howell. She's from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and they have helped us tremendously on these grants and others to keep us doing the right thing. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. As Mr. Woodin was speaking about the public hearing, this was originally scheduled on September 11th, but I think because maybe of the hurricane, we rescheduled. So we're, and they did two public hearing closeouts tonight for the two ARC projects. One was for $532,703 and that was the Harmony Grove. And that benefited 20 homes and 10 businesses and the ARC funded 57% of the total cost where the county funded the difference on that. And then there was the total poly assurance line, which was $140,500. And this basically served the McDowell Technical Community Colleges and private companies back there. And ARC financed 49% of that where the county offset the difference on that. So these projects are, have been closed out and finished. And so basically, we just have to have the public hearing tonight and then we'll submit our paperwork to the state. It'll close us out pending audit.
Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am, thank you Lord for being here and we appreciate the work that you do and how beneficial the local government you are. We couldn't do a lot of what we do without you and your group. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak concerning the information that we have just received? Okay?
I just turned my motion quick for a quick...
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed last time. Okay? We ever recovered any of that?
Yes, sir.
All right, great.
Again, we appreciate Laurie for coming up and working on the grant.
We had dedication down at the Forest Service.
That's right.
And that was a great day down there. So we're always looking to expand and build on that system down there and so we appreciate that you and Lord. At this time, let's go to Siscomia, and we have no one present who has signed up to speak, so we'll dispense with that. Reports, communications, do we have anyone, any staff or board member reports, communications, anything we need to relate each other? I would say that as far as communications, I mean, Barry met with the sheriff concerning that from last night under Siscomia. As a result of that, the sheriff has worked hard and so he's going to meet one more time with the property owners and the businesses and Barry's going to be present when they do that too. And beyond that, I mean, that's, that's all that can be done without further external to both us and them. So there's your day on that. Anyone else? Okay, there being none. At this time, we move to our 4:45 appointment. We're just a little ahead of schedule, but this is, I think the presenters are here. This will be the staff and board members, Amanda Elitch and Chuck Avdenathy. So y'all can come on in and we're glad that, we're so glad to host this again this year. You're always so kind and gracious and the host, the McDowell County Board Commissioners as we celebrate here again, the first meeting of county government in this particular facility. So we're honored to be here. So the floor is yours.
Yeah, the black floor.
Y'all can come stand camera there.
There you have it.
Right over here where Laurie is somewhere around in this area.
We're going to be...
Come this way, Chuck. On this way.
Very hurry. Thank you, slide forward, Chuck. It is, it is an honor to be back here. The chairman mentioned the tradition that goes with this meeting. And the first meeting to form the county was in 1843, which if my math is correct, was 174 years. So that is a longstanding tradition and it's really an honor. It was always the best meeting of the year and the most special. I was trying to remember the year that we started this and Cheryl could look it up and tell us, but I'm thinking 26 or seven years ago, 28, somewhere in that frame is when the county started holding an October meeting. So it is very much an honor. I'm going to quickly do, do three things, update you on three brief items, and then Amanda Elitch is going to do the, do the lion's share of this. Your funding is just more than I ever realized, just so imperative to what this organization does. It's $20,000 a year. There's historic homes not too far away that receive nothing from county government. And what, what that does for us is, is just extreme and it's impact. We're doing three kind of capitalized items, if you will, and it's capital on a much different scale than it, than it is for you guys. But we're doing repairs to the front porch, which were, which was leaking and sagging. And so that's, that's being done. We've put storm windows on all the windows to better secure the house. And Amanda wrote a grant for a gate that will go across the front that the Marion Murder Club found or funded, excuse me, that will be, will be done. So there's continued improvements. The second thing I'll talk about briefly, and I cannot pronounce the word, I can say bicentennial and sesquicentennial, but I cannot say the 175th in Latin, do you?
Septus sesquicentennial.
That's why I can't say it. I can't even say it after Amanda said it. But the 175th anniversary of Marion and the county is coming up next year. And so we have a, have a series of events that, that we're starting to work on. We have met with, with Boswell and Ashley Woodin to talk about how that, how that would work and what we would do. I think you guys requested that the Carson House take some lead and so the board of directors have discussed that and are enthusiastic about, about doing that. The dates will be, or the date, the week is September 23rd through the 29th of next year. So there would be essentially a week-long series of events with each day having a special event culminating on the 28th, which is a, which is a Friday here with the gathering of the Over the Mountain Victory Trail. But what we're looking to do, and this is a good chance for the public to have some input, is we're looking at groups of people like the Marion Downtown Group, the Trails Association, the city, the county and others, kind of taking the lead and sponsoring one of the days. And then the Carson House will coordinate whatever event is, is decided upon. But again, we're going to coordinate that. But that's a year away and it's not, not too early to begin, to begin planning ahead. So, again, thank you, thank you so much for the, for the funding and for carrying on this tradition. And thank you for the work you do, elected officials and staff, is, is very much appreciated. Amanda Finn is our director. She has had the position for around 15 months. She is a, she can tell you a little bit about her background, but she is trained, a trained historian and has pretty extensive experience and background with museum work and is the daughter of Bob and Sonia Elitch, who everybody knows. So she's a native from McDowell County. So I'll introduce her, Amanda.
Thanks, Chuck. Mary Hardy, welcome to the historic Carson House where we love to have you here every year. And speaking of the 175th, it was in this room that the 17 justices of the peace met in 1843 to create the county of McDowell, Adamburg and Rutherford. So you were standing in the first courthouse, or sitting, in the first courthouse, our first polling site. This is our first jail right beneath your feet. This was our first inn and tavern. It was at the crossroads of the Colonial Road, which is just behind the house, and the Coach Road that was newly formed in 1792 in front of the house. So Carson was a very entrepreneurial man, decided to build at the crossroads. And so that is why so much of our county history has happened right here. So, speaking of more recent history, in the past three weeks, we have had 615 students from McDowell County through our doors. Most of them, 450 of them, were fourth graders on October the 29th for our OVTA Over Mountain Victory Trail Day. We're always thrilled to see them. We've heard that it was the best year yet. We had a lot of demonstrators, a lot of people from in and outside of McDowell County combined to make that day really fun for our fourth graders. So that was great. A few upcoming events that we have, on October 14th, we will have a booth at Mountain Glory. So make sure you stop by and see us. On October 21st, we will have our first annual Halloween Fun Run on the Greenway. So speaking of how very important our Greenway is to us, we will be hosting an event there with McDowell Trails. And then November 4th will be our local market, which gathers craftspeople from all over western Carolina out here in the harbor for some early Christmas shopping. Labs will help you if you need help. And then December 2nd and 3rd, we will have our annual candlelight tours, which are free to the public. So please come and join us. Everything on the first floor is lit by authentic candlelight. It's really lovely. We decorate an era-specific decor, so you really can't miss it. And one more thing before I let you have your meeting, ma'am. Some ongoing research. A lot of people come here and they say, well, I've lived in McDowell County for 30 years. I'm sure everything's the same. And I'd say, no, history's living, guys. We, we constantly do research. And so two of the things that we are doing research on now that might be of interest to you all and to the public is we are continuing to map DNA here for the Carson family, for the McDowell family and many other founding McDowell families, including an aspect of that mapping that tracks the land grants that were originally written in McDowell County. Of course, it wasn't part of McDowell County then, it was part of Her Majesty's Government, but we got over that relatively quickly. And so some of these early land grants are very early and are in archives in London, which I've done work in before and they're being very helpful. So we're working, also working with the National Parks Service. And they are doing an aspect of that research near Lake James where the OVTA trail goes through. So those are two of the things that we're working on now. So anyone that wants to come and do research in the Greenway Library just behind us here, it's free to the public. We're happy to help you with any projects you're working on and we look forward to seeing you all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So, so honored to be here again today. We love this, this house and the history. And as you said, history's always changing. Present, future, past, past that change, the future does, you can make an impact. So we encourage everybody to try to make an impact wherever you're at, whatever you're doing, make a positive impact, positive change. At this time, let's see, do we have anything else to cover on our agenda? Looks like we have completed tonight's agenda. Jim, I hear a motion. Let's, let's do, Dr. Hany always did our prayer for the food in here and I always love to hear him say his prayer, but he's not here to attend us tonight. So let's go ahead and have, wish around, if you don't mind, bless the food and then we'll go ahead and entertain him, wishing to adjourn the meeting. And one other, yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Jim, before you, before you did that, Carson, ever since I've been on board, they've always been very gracious to us and, and the host, they, Jim, and you, you man on the block, but they've always been gracious to feed us great food every time. Sometimes they make a little suggestion and they've even been on Chuck to go along with what I would like. And I appreciate that, which is everything. But, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the bill for them tonight so they won't incur a cost and that would be our donation back to them for tonight's hosting us.
I don't think that's, that's a very honorable statement of motion. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All of those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye opposed last time. Amanda, if you don't mind, pick the check up when we leave. Okay? Thank you very much. Mr. Brown?
Father, we thank you again for this day and we thank you for the good meeting we had. We pray, Father, that we would always do that and be good for our county and our community. We thank you for the Carson House and for those that work so hard to see that the doors stay open. We thank you for the history of this card, of this house. And, Father, we also thank you for the love that we know that this staff has for this facility and for the work that it does. And we pray, Father, that you should bless it. We ask you, Father, now to bless the food that we're about to have and we pray God that you help to use it, Father, for the nourishment of our body and us to thy service. In Christ's name, ask all things. Amen.
Amen. All right, did I hear most of the adjournments?
Most of the adjournments.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you, most of the adjournments.